We're going to go ahead and get started with our city council work session, session for the city of Jonesboro, October 6th, 2025, called to order at 6:02. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Yes ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem Messick.
Present.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Don Dixon. Councilmember Alfred Dixon.
Present.
Councilmember Bobby Lester.
Here.
And Councilmember Miller.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Counsel, there is an agenda before you. The only addition that I have is a presentation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month upon the presentation. Counsel, do we have a need for executive session today?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, for the purposes of?
Real estate personnel and legal matters.
Madam Clerk, were we going to wait until November for the adoption of the council calendar and holiday calendar?
I think that's when we're going to do the approval, but it's just on for discussion.
Okay, perfect.
And then I have, I need to remove letter M under new business, council to consider approval over fee waiver, release street part regarding domestic violence awareness. They cancel the event. We received notification.
What item is the, for the holiday schedule? I apologize.
Um, the last E, whole business, letter E.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Counsel, yes ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were we still adding to this?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I wanted to add, setting a day and time for a forum for our candidates that are coming up for election.
So that would be N because N has become M.
I'm sorry ma'am.
I was noting for the clerk.
Oh, okay.
Clerk, since we, I apologize. Since we moved, since we deleted M, everything pushes up, so this new item would be item N. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Counsel, is there any other additions?
Mayor.
Yes.
Also, if we can have, I received an email from our DDA chair, if we can have a moment for a presentation she would like to present this evening.
That would go under presentations? Let's put that up under new business. L, M, N, O. Is that right? Yeah, O.
Yes.
Oh.
All right, anything else?
One more thing, mayor.
Yes.
A discussion of a report from a watchdog, watchdog group called SAFE that was received in city emails.
Yes. Chief, can we make sure we have this available for that presentation? If you can get that back there to Zany. This is the videos and everything from him. Videos I sent you, because the gentleman here to present, I'm going to play that. I also want to add.
Mayor, what, where would that fall on the agenda?
I'm going to put that in the new business, but prior to that, I want to add a video. Well, no, I'll probably do it after he talks. Wait a minute, let me see if you can, hold on.
Would that be, I'm sorry now, would that be on the P for the presentation?
I'm trying to think, I want to put it before the presentation. Who's giving the presentation for SAFE?
I wanted to discuss an email we received. I'm not sure if anyone's here representing.
Okay, so it's just a discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes ma'am.
So let me go over everything that was added. Under presentation, there's a mayor's presentation. We slash, we removed M under new business. So counsel to discuss ordinance regarding a budget transfer, that will now be M.
Yes.
N would be the discussion of a candidate forum. O would be a DDA presentation by the DDA chair. P, can't go alphabetical order. P will be a discussion. Will you be leading that discussion?
I can.
Okay, do you have copies of that, so we can go get copies of the emails?
We were emailed, but we can, we can.
I don't think, was I copy on it?
I can, I can send one to the city clerk if she wants to go make.
If you would send one to, Maria, could you go make copies for us?
Oh, he is here. The gentleman is here.
But not to speak though.
He is, he is with SAFE.
To speak for what?
SAFE.
That has, yeah, let's run that video. Attorney, how do we do it? He can only speak during public comment. He can't come speak on the agenda.
I would, I'm, mayor, yes, I would, if someone is coming to speak, that's not an agenda item business. It would be under presentation.
So it would be under presentations?
Yes.
Presentations or public comment?
That's a great question. If it's not set up ahead of time as presentations, I'd put it under public comments.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Well, he will be allowed to, he will be allowed to speak when we have our discussion on the information that he's sent us, correct?
But if he's doing a full presentation, wouldn't it be better opposed on the presentation?
Because he's here and we're adding it to the agenda.
So that's what I'm saying, why wouldn't we just add it as presentation?
That's fine with me.
I can present.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to scratch P and put that under?
Yes. And then I will add a video presentation after his presentation. Perfect. And so we'll let his go first and then the mayor's presentation. All right, so let's go over all the changes. First presentation is a presentation by SAFE. The second presentation will be the mayor's presentation. Item N is counsel to discuss regarding budget transfer. Item, that's item M. Item N is candidate forum. Item O is DDA presentation. And we will have executive session for the purposes of personnel and real estate matters. I'll entertain a motion to accept agenda with said changes.
Motion to accept the agenda with said, said changes.
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have public comment. No, at this time, we have presentations. Did you give them the video? You gave them the clip, okay.
How you guys doing? I have some stuff to pass out. I'll send it to you.
Uh-uh, stay back there, stay back there. Keep them back there.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to finish other ones, and I apologize. The orientation of this is going to be on the left-hand side. And working your way through, I'll get right to it. We have done an investigative report.
Yeah.
Inside this binding, you're going to find the initial city charter. It'd be front and back. It goes over budgets. It goes over action by the city council, which you guys are authorized to do, vote on, et cetera. It also goes over the removal of officers, second page. It also goes over the powers and duties of mayor. I'd like to highlight on the back end of the first page. Section 2.27, back into this page. Number eight. It goes over providing annual audit for all accounts. The violations of the city charts are outlined in here, and I'll give you guys an opportunity to go over that in the investigative hearing, but in short, there's two massive violations. One, mayor has failed to provide annual audits from an independent source, and that's outlined by the city charter. Number two is that the mayor has done a phenomenal job in circumventing the city council.
So what we're not going to do, sir?
Are you?
No, no.
Are you interrupting me?
I am interrupting him, chief. I am interrupting him, chief. I am.
I have time to talk. I have time to talk. I have time to talk.
Chief, remove them. Do, this is not appropriate forum for that?
That's fine.
Especially with all the charges that you have?
That's fine.
Thank you.
But I tell you what.
No, no, you won't tell them nothing. You'll tell them to guard there. Thank you. Can you play that video, please? My concern for asking him to leave, this current gentleman that has been harassing the city, also has current charges. We'll wait till he leaves. Zany, can you get ready to play the video, please? Just wait till he leaves. I don't mind. There is a recourse for any questions that someone has in regard to my leadership, but we are not going to have someone up here that has been stalking me? No, this, chief, let's get them out of here. You can go ahead and play. This very same gentleman that has come to all of our meetings, that has been harassing me and following me, has his own set of charges. The organization that he's mentioning SAFE is the same organization that he was arrested up under for slicing and cutting homeless people's tents in the city of Atlanta. Go ahead and play it. This is also the same gentleman that has three stalking orders against him, against other females, as well as pulling out an AK-47 out of his trunk to threaten homeless people in the city of Atlanta. He's banned from Sweet Auburn. So again, anyone, counsel, you all are entitled to bring whatever allegation, whatever causes you feel necessary, but we will not entertain or allow this forum to be a spectacle for someone such as that. Now, there's a level of respect that we're going to have in here, and a level of safety for myself as well as anyone else that sits in here. If people's in on tint, bro.
It's on top.
Okay. Okay. Give us a second, please. Would we like to go ahead and have the DDA presentation, or you want to wait till the end still? While we're waiting on that, would you all want to go ahead and have the DDA presentation?
Yeah, let's go with it.
Was that, did we put her under presentation?
We didn't, but I think we can make a, well, once I thought about it and realized it was so long, so.
I think we voted to put her under.
Okay, we can wait. Yeah, she was up under that.
Okay.
While we're waiting, Andrew, can you come here for a second, please? If people's in on tint, bro.
It's on top, nobody.
He, he was in on tint while you doing that. If people's in on tint, just how you did, just how they killed Kenee Zaino. He slicing and cutting. He slicing and cutting. He slicing and cutting, bro.
The video goes on to show him arbitrarily with no law enforcement slicing the homeless tents in the city of Atlanta, which he was subsequent charged for. Do you go to the second one? There's also footage of him giving an AK, what was it, chief, out of his car? Boom, heavy machine rifle, threatening the homeless people in Atlanta. So again, you're not going to be able to leave Atlanta and come down here and do the service.
Also has every right to file or do whatever they would like to do, but we are not going to be subjected to an issue where I have concerns regarding safety. So that's the police report where he's. Where he's actually being arrested by Fulton County deputies. That's the gentleman right there. I think this was March, within the last couple of months, or May. So he was arrested, and that's a young lady who currently has a T, a restraining order against him for his acts of violence. And so this is the organization that he represents, SAFE, so I have concerns about hearing presentations from that particular organization at this particular time without further notice or the opportunity for legal counsel to review any allegations by them. So again, I apologize for the abruptness, but when I was given this information, we're not going to entertain that. All right, thank you so much. Thanks, Zany. All right, next we have mayor's presentation. Actually, I have a special guest. I'm going to step down from the dais. Taylor.
I think a few of you all were given pink bells, October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
This is something that impacts our community and something that's personally dear to my heart. So we pay tribute to survivors. We play tribute to warriors, and I wanted to call the name of these people that are connected to our city. Mary Baker, Ellen Divins, Judy Simmons, Loretta Nelson, Jennifer Freeman, Tanya Steele Drummond, Beverly Christie, Michelle Mick, Vivian Hampton, Jessie Goree, Robin Brady, Maxine Grimes, Michelle Robbins-Lotti, Jennifer Doggery, Hoffman, Hannah Rock, Sandra Riley, Pamela Fran, Lynette Hawkins-Price, Rosa Mae Maddox, Barbara Ann Person, Tony Thomas, Elcinda Person, Danny Person, Willie Jewell Barber, Barbara Holmes, Farrah Pullen, Etta Jones, Sandra M. Sullivan, Jose Delagare, one of my favorites, Donnie Sarter, and last but not least, Dr. Barbara Pullen, who's on our previous Clayton County superintendent's. So Dr. Barbara Pullen, would you come forth and accept this month's breast cancer awareness proclamation? For the proclamation reads, a proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women in the United States, and while advances in treatment have improved survival rates, it remains a leading cause of cancer-related deaths. Whereas early detection through regular screening, including mammograms, significantly increases the chances of successful treatment and survival. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month provides an opportunity to honor the strength and resilience of survivors, remember those who have passed and support families and caregivers affected by the disease. And whereas public awareness campaigns, community events, and educational initiatives throughout October aim to promote screening, raise funds for research, and foster solidarity for those impacted by breast cancer. Whereas we encourage all residents, government agencies, businesses, and organizations to participate in activities that increase awareness and support and efforts to combat breast cancer. Now therefore, I, Dr. Danielle Sarter, Mayor for the City of Jonesboro, and city council, do hereby proclaim October 25th as Breast Cancer Awareness, Awareness Month in the City of Jonesboro. And we urge all citizens to join in this observance by wearing pink, supporting local initiatives, and spreading awareness in breast cancer prevention. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Jonesboro to be affixed this sixth day of October, 2025. And if you have a bell, we'll ring the bell in honor. And if you have a bell, we'll ring the bell in honor.
As a member of this wonderful group of people, I'm talking about those of us who have managed to survive breast cancer, I just wanna thank you. And members of this board, I wanna thank you for taking the time to recognize us. This has not been an easy journey for many of us. But we strive to do what we can for ourselves, but also for others who are also struggling with this disease. I don't know if you know this or not, but even though we come through cures and we come through help, breast cancer can return. And so that's always shadowing all of us. Do the best we can, thank the people who are helping us, and just supporting us in whatever we need to do. But we will support you also. I understand how you feel, but again, I just wanna say thank you for taking the time to recognize us. Thank you.
Thank you again, council, for allowing this opportunity to recognize our heroes, our survivors, and our warriors. At this time, we'll have public comment. I think, Dr. Pullin, you just signed him, I don't think she was doing public comment. Um, I can't read the name, but it's phone number four oh four seven nine seven five three two two in regard to zoning. It looks like it might start with an H. Harland?
Uh, that might be, I was, I thought this was for the zoning calendar, I don't know.
Okay, perfect. What's your last name, what's your name?
My actual, my name is actually Hakeem Hill.
Hillier, okay, yeah. No, you're fine. No problem. So at this time, we have no, um, public comments. We also have no public hearing. Our community, our interim community development director, Faith Akuta, is at a conference, so she'll be joining us via Zoom. Faith, can you hear us and everything?
Yes, I can hear you all, good evening.
Good evening.
You wanna go ahead and start with first item under new business?
Yes, ma'am. New business A, council to discuss alcohol beverage pouring license number twenty-five ALC zero zero eight to dispense beer, wine, and distilled spirits at eight five six two Tara Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six. The legal business name is Southside Sports and Grill. Bobby Kimball has requested to be the licensed representative.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, and cities of the City of Jonesboro. That is for you, it is on request approval of national license for variant wine and distilled spirits at eight five six two Tara Boulevard, operated under legal business name, Southside Grill and Grill. This is a new restaurant to the city and now a new alcohol license. That applicant has met all physical requirements and a background check and fingerprinting conducted by the Jonesboro Police Department, um, revealed no violation of the concerned, so staff is requesting approval of this license.
Staff, you have? Staff, any questions? All right, this will go to next week for a hearing.
Letter B, council to discuss variance application number twenty-five V A R zero zero one, submitted by Max Kovton for properties located at two six two and two nine four South Main Street. Parcel numbers zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two, zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two Z, and zero six zero three two A, B zero zero six, Jonesboro, Georgia, within the MX mixed-use district and the G Gateway South District. The properties consist of twenty-nine point one four plus or minus acres. The request seeks relief from the Gateway South District's exterior architectural design and material standards specifically related to porches and balconies.
Is this the one where items B, C, and D are connected, Mrs. Akuta?
Yes.
How would you like to address them, individually, or?
Um, we can call them all at once and then ask you one single presentation and then each title require, um, I guess a discussion.
Well, let's do item by item then. Okay.
So we'll just follow the, um, Bureau of Health and Order?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, good evening again, mayor, council, and citizens. Um, the request for you, um, is for a project totaling twenty-nine point fourteen plus minus acres and includes parcels previously approved under conditional use permit number twenty-four dash C U dash zero nine B. The conditional use was granted on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and authorized the development of three four-story multifamily building buildings of approximately two hundred residential units with essential amenity area. Since that time, the applicant has submitted an updated site plan dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, which now includes an additional parcel, parcel zero six, zero three two A, B zero zero six. This parcel was not part of the original conditional use approval. As a result, a new conditional use approval from mayor and council is required and want for the applicant to continue with the site plan as proposed. Therefore, no building activity permitting or occupancy made occur on that parcel until the approval is granted. So this could be the variance, the applicant is seeking relief from architectural standards for porches and balconies as outlined in the Gateway South Old Land District. The Gateway South Old Land District includes additional architectural, interior, and landscape requirements beyond those required in the Baytown District. Um, staff does recommend a free of this request with condition, and with that, I'd like to take any questions.
Can you, um, kinda decipher this in layman's terms for this particular one, what it means in regard? You all, do y'all know what par- parcel this is?
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody familiar with parcel, parcel, it is, okay. Do y'all have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Have, has the developer presented, um, some drawings of what the new, some of these, uh, this is the first one we're looking at, but the, the other follow-up, some of these are very, very, um, big architectural changes from what they originally presented. Have they, have they presented any drawings, any pictures, any renderings yet of what their idea would be moving forward with these changes?
Yes, so it should be on page, and I'm scrolling through the agenda, it should be on page twenty-eight of the package. Um, there's some elevation of how the actual, um, porches and balconies would appear on the exterior, but as far as elevation throughout the development, um, that has provided ownership as far as what the unit would look like with outdoor balcony on the interior.
Can you also, uh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So when I was reading through the packet, are there, are they try, are they excluding the balconies completely from the, from the buildings?
No, they just excluded them from the interior of the, um, development. So pretty much with the units that have like street frontage, um, that wrap around, so will have actual porches and balconies. Um, but the porches on the interior, um, there was also no balcony, no porch.
How many units are, does that involve on the interior?
I'm sorry?
How many units is that? I mean, how many buildings is that that would be in the interior that are not street-facing?
I think, um, excuse me, respectfully, mayor, pro temp, I think, um, do we have a full landscape? Cause I asked the same question, until you can visually see what inside and outside means?
Yes.
Cause originally, they wanted to remove all of them. Faith, um, Mr. Akuta, do you have that? I was looking in the package, if we have the entire plat so that, um, council can see what we're referring to when we say inside and outside?
The site plan should have been included, um.
Uh, let me see. Yeah, this isn't the.
The site number showed layout, but applicant has not provided, um, any further detail.
If you look on page sixty-six, council, this is a really primitive version of it. Would you like?
The applicant is presenting if they may have it on hand.
It's applicant, come on, come for.
I'm not sure if you all can be mindful and everybody share it, but, um.
Please do. Can you share your screen with me? Zany, does she need authorization to, um, be able to share? Can this wait till Thursday? Can this wait till Thursday? I mean, I can, I can take it and talk to you about it.
So on the, um, exhibit you have there, the green stripe is where the balconies would remain. And so the interior, on the top left corner, the L shape, that would be the interior where they would requesting to remove them.
And the original plans had balconies on every unit?
Yeah, the, the ordinance requires balconies for every single unit.
And so the original plan to us that we reviewed had the balconies on every one. Also want council to be mindful, this is in our overlay district where we have specific standards, and that was my only concern with some of these, you know, why have an overlay if we're gonna be so flexible with the standards of what we wanted in that particular area? And I thought when we originally talked, we talked about bringing them to the outside. That's why she was saying, on the outside, you put them on the inside. And we had that, Faith, I don't know if you seen what he gave us, Ms. Akuta, but he has the, the overhang facing the parking lot. And I thought we clearly talked about if you, if we were gonna lesson, if we were going to do them, we were gonna put them on the outside.
So this would, this would be the most visible areas where they're highlighted on this plan. So along the street frontage and then, um.
I know, but that's not what we talked about. And that's why she stated something totally different.
Oh, what?
Y'all changed it since we talked, since Ms. Faith, Ms. Akuta met with you all.
We did not intend to, I thought we were on the same.
No, no, she said on the outside, and that's what we talked about.
Okay.
Mayor, when did we?
There is, there is a slow here, with the ground floor.
Councilman Dixon?
When did we switch to South Main Street? The last one we saw ingress and egress was on Tara Boulevard.
It's still there.
It's still there.
I'm not seeing it.
It's the road that runs.
This right here, the grayish color.
Yeah, Tara Boulevard runs along the bottom of the page.
Yeah, there's only one, do you see it right there?
See it right there, if it's not.
Yeah, that's why I said, that, that one's kinda like primitive. That was like before it started clearing. So this is, this is more similar to what we approved. Yes, can you answer, so the, how many units is, is in this entire plan?
One ninety-six.
And now the ones that you have highlighted, how many?
Uh, it's about half. It's a reduction of about half.
About, approximately, numbers?
Yeah, there's probably, um, a hundred units without balconies that would have balconies otherwise.
And I don't think that could be accurate, because when I look at the elevation, every unit, even on the, on the elevations, uh, even on the side that you're putting the balconies, every unit doesn't have a balcony. Is that what it, is this, so are you saying that every unit, but on right here? Does that mean that every unit facing this one has a balcony?
Every unit except the ground floor.
Except for the ground floor.
So it's two, three, and four all have balconies on the, on the front sides of the buildings.
But the balconies on the bottom level don't count, cause they all have cement or something like that.
So we, we are requesting a reduction in the patio for the ground floor as well, um, and then having balconies on two, three, and four. That's part of the request. We have a lot of, um, safety concerns with having balconies and patios at another door on the ground floor, and we've had a lot of feedback from our residents that they prefer having a landscape strip between the building and the parking lot versus having an exterior balcony on the ground floor. Um, and so that's why we were, um, putting them all on two through four, the balconies.
So, so my concern, and, and council can speak up as well, you bring us a product that we agree, and then you bring us significant variances that takes away from the original product that we, you went from all balconies to half the balconies to, to drastically reducing the green space. And so, and then you're citing, um, you're citing safety concerns, and I would have hoped that you all would have considered those sakes, safety concerns before you brought it to us for the first go-around. Because they just didn't become unsafe.
Sure, um.
And I know you all have other properties that have a hundred percent balconies. Or at least seventy, I think the one we saw had like a very significant amount.
So, so the, so the balconies are the, one of the reasons for the removal or the request for the, the ground floor patios to go away as well is you can see the, um, the stream setback that runs through the center of the property. The red outline is the stream setbacks, and so it's really pinching each side of the property. Um, and so the distance we need to meet all the requirements, um, has really been, really been, um, pushed together because of the stream setbacks. So between those two things, that's one reason we're also asking for the reduction in the balconies for the ground floor. In order to meet the six-foot requirement around the building, it goes parking lot, another one of the variances, um, as we kind of, they all kind of interconnected with one another, but, um, one of the other variants requests is there's, there's the parking, and then there's, should be a two-foot landscape strip, and then the sidewalk, and then six-foot landscape, and then you have patio of six feet, and then the building front. So it's just too much, um, distance to cover, and we have such a small space because of all the streams and wetlands that are in that area, just pinching it all together.
But the wetlands were there when y'all came with your first proposal.
Understood, but, but when you get into the, you know, the civil design of it all, you really dig into, you know, how much room do you really have to, to make it all work?
Is it impossible to put, is it unsafe to put balconies on every apartment as originally presented before us?
If we can get relief from the ground floor on those, on the two-foot distance between the back of curb and sidewalk, and then even the patio, if we had the patio and it didn't have to be six feet from the front of the patio, I know this is kinda hard to follow, but, um, the six-foot around the building, if we get relief on that, we could do more balconies throughout the property.
Yeah, and I don't think we're, we're like, we're not in the business of bargaining with, especially with green space. But council, y'all have any additional conversation in regard to the balconies and the porches?
Mayor?
About, he said he's approximately about half. It has to be a little, he's doing away with a little bit more than that, because if you look at the picture, the, um, this building right here has a little lip on it, and so that has nothing, so it has to be a little bit more than half. Councilman Dixon?
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing this back before us, um, I appreciate it. Now, you talk about the balconies, uh, removing the balconies. What are we replacing the balconies with?
Nothing.
So there'd be nothing replacing them?
So, and that, I think that's my, my point, too. You know, balconies that, you know, it's more than just a balcony, right? You know, when it comes to families, um, young families or whatever that looks like. But can we be creative in providing an alternative? You know, that balcony is for therapy use, you know, we go out to, 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 to take a break, right? But if we're taking that away, what are we replacing that with? Like, can we, can we, can we explore, can we get creative a bit and, um, see what rooftop activation looks like?
Um, so, so some of the amenities, I think, in the, in the overall, um, community, will address some of the things I think you're thinking about. Um, we have onsite fitness center, we have business centers, we have, um, playground onsite, um, we have onsite laundry. Um, so there's, there's a lot of amenities throughout the community that kind of gets people out of their unit and, 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 um, socializing with the rest of the community.
Okay. Now, would you be open to, I guess, exploring those options as far as rooftop activations when it comes to, you know, community gardens on top of the rooftop? Or, or, um, I know we talked about re- retail, I know it's mixed-use development.
Right.
Could we have a, in the, in our, was it the Gateway South overlay district? Can we have a rooftop restaurant for the community on, up here?
So, um, that's kind of out of our scope, I would say, is doing any kind of rooftop work. We could have, um, we could have community gardens on the ground level, that's something that we could definitely look at doing.
Would it be impossible to explore it on the rooftop? Would it be impossible to explore it on the rooftop level?
It's just, it gets, it gets, there's a lot of structural engineering, a lot of cost that goes into adding weight to the roof. It's just something that, you know, the cost of adding a rooftop garden gets exponential compared to, you know, just having one, you know, on the, on the ground.
And I understand. I just, I love it when I go into other communities and see those things, so I would love to, you know, represent that here in Jonesboro too.
Gotcha.
So we'll have a hearing next, mayor, potential, yeah, additional questions?
I'm sorry?
Did you have additional questions for the balcony part?
Not on the balconies.
Okay. Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm speaking for everyone, council, or what, but I appreciate these. Thank you.
Yes.
But I'm a little bit more visual than that. And so is there any way when you guys come back or before you all come back, maybe you can email us something that actually shows like a model of this is what you all approved, and this is what it looks like? And I mean, from everything, from the brick to, and I know we haven't gotten there yet, but all of the requests, variants, and things like that. Can we see some sort of a model that'll make it a little bit easier to digest all the changes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You gonna give, get that for them?
I can get that.
We asked for that. Well, I don't know, he said that would cost a lot. Well, thank you so much. Yes, sir. Councilman D. Dixon?
What? The number is approximately half of the balconies, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so how much is that gonna save you?
How much money will it save?
Yeah.
I don't know, what is the, you know what the cost of a balcony is? Probably two thousand dollars a unit or so.
Well, my other question was, what can you do to replace that and give something else to the residents? If you're gonna save fifty to a hundred thousand dollars on the project by removing those, what can you do for them to replace it?
Yeah, you know, I think the community garden's a great idea. That's something that we could look at doing to, to replace that cost.
So would you consider more balconies other than just half?
Sure, yeah, we would consider that, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll suggest that.
Okay.
It's the amenity of being able to be in your home and go to your balcony, not to have to get dressed to go to a rooftop or to a thing. And I think that is what we were originally agreed upon. And so I would think a substantial amount, council, am I speaking for everybody, like a substantial amount? I want to go pray and meditate, okay.
And there are, we do have residents who prefer not to have balconies.
No, I understand that, and I know there's.
It does give an option to.
Yeah, I think we just would like to see more, and what happens is, I feel like if you, the aesthetic value of no balconies, even when we talked about the Juliet framing, it just ends up looking like concrete.
Right.
All right, let's go. If there's no further questions, we'll go to item C. Yes?
Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Casey Craven.
Thank you.
Casey wanted to hang out for a little while.
Yeah, we got a couple more to go.
Item C, council to discuss variance application twenty-five V A R zero zero two submitted by Max Kufton for properties located at two six two and two nine four South Main Street. Parcels number zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two, zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two Z, and zero six zero three two A, B zero zero six, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six, within the MX mixed-use district and the G Gateway South District. The properties consist of twenty-nine point one four plus or minus acres. The request seeks relief from the Gateway South District's exterior architectural design and material standard specifically related to primary materials.
Good evening again. This particular request has the same zoning history as V R, excuse me, twenty-five V R zero zero one. And this particular variance request is for building materials. The applicant is requesting, the applicant proposes building, the brick coverage, which is a percentage of each provide for this particular variance request.
So this was lessening the amount of brick?
Correct.
So you want to go from what to what?
So seventy percent is the requirement, and we're requesting to go to fifty percent. And so the elevation on the second page, you can see the, the brick that we are proposing.
So originally seventy percent would mean the first three floors would be brick and only the, approximately.
Approximately, that's right.
And now they're asking for a reduction. The overlay requires seventy percent brick, am I correct? Yep. So now they want to bring it down?
It's seventy percent. I think it's like sixty-eight.
Okay, okay.
I'm just showing my OCD.
Thank you, mayor, for that. So basically, you would look at three floors brick, and so instead of the brick, what is that, a stucco material or what is it?
No, it's a fiber cement.
Does it look like hardy plank or something?
Yeah, it's hardy plank.
All right, any questions on that?
Mayor?
Yes.
Why?
So, one of the reasons is when you go over thirty feet in brick, you're required to do additional steel anchors. So it does get costly when you go over thirty feet. We have some properties that are a hundred percent brick, and once you go over about fifty percent aesthetically, in our opinion, it becomes, it starts to look a little more industrial, a little more institutional for residential. If you, if you see any, you know, apartment developments that you think look really good, you know, it's usually not more than fifty percent brick on those properties.
Okay, aesthetically speaking, mayor, you presented us some visuals.
With everything that he just said, like.
Of exactly, exactly what we were expecting. And so, so the biggest, what you're telling us though is the biggest drawback is the cost?
So, so for the brick, yeah, the brick is, you know, it just, it gets, like I said, when you get over thirty feet, it just becomes bit of an issue with maintenance and, and, yeah, just trying to, to keep it at that fifty percent.
But you were aware of the requirements?
That's right.
With the overlay district when you made your original proposal?
Sure.
Okay.
So what happened, the main, like, we're trying to just wrap our heads around like presenting a beautiful product that we gave the green light to, to come back and substantial changes of which the majority of the reasons could have been valid at the initial time that you bought it before council.
So, like I said, a lot of it is just.
They put you on the hot seat today. I want to come help him up here.
So, so just, just with any of it, you know, when we, when we come initially, it's more of a conceptual design. And then as you dig into your architect and civil engineering plans, you just, you just learn more about the development. And sometimes learning those things kind of guides your design as well. So that's really what's happening here. We're not trying to, trying to double-cross you or anything.
I feel that way, Craven, because y'all are, y'all been in business for a while. Y'all should know what three feet of brick do.
Sure.
Before now. Yeah, so now you're telling me that things change. Well, no, y'all do this for a living, so you knew then that three feet of brick would cause structural concerns.
Right, but once we get, you know, we don't want to.
Is the building gonna fall down if you give three, three stories of brick?
The building will not fall down at three stories of brick.
Okay, well, good. All right, we can go to the next item.
Letter D, council to discuss variance application twenty-five V A R zero zero three submitted by Max Kufton for properties located at two six two and two nine four South Main Street. Parcels number zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two, zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two Z, and zero six zero three two A, B zero zero six, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six, within the MX mixed-use district and the G Gateway South District. The properties consist of twenty-nine point one four plus or minus acres. The request seeks relief from the Gateway South District's exterior architectural design and material standards specifically related to sidewalks.
Good evening again. This variance request also has the same zoning history as twenty-five V A R zero zero one. This particular request addresses street state requirements you need to the Gateway South Overlay, specifically the overlay requirement of the two-foot wide landscape median strip between all sidewalks and curbs. The applicant is requesting relief from his standards for mercurial due to special complaints, sorry, constraint, and site circulation needs. And the applicant did indicate that this is only in, requested in two particular points within the development, so it's not throughout. The applicant did indicate that it is for two particular pinch points. That does recommend approval with permission.
I want to make sure I have this right. The pinch points are the red areas here?
Yeah, the red.
But I thought that was for the six foot from the sidewalk to the building.
That's right, I think. The two-foot landscape strip is across.
Okay, so the two-foot landscape, Ms. Akuta, so you all know like when you get out your car, before the sidewalk starts, it's two feet of green, and then the sidewalks, that's what we're talking about now, and that would be consistent throughout. My concern with that is that throughout our city, all of our sidewalks have a green buffer. And so why would we create a community that has less than what the standard is throughout our community? If you all notice, most of our sidewalks have that little.
Safe barrier.
Big bar?
Barrier, a safety barrier.
Yeah, so we have that. And so that was my concern. To take that away completely would mean you step out your car, you step directly into the curb, and what happened, that you want to change this now?
So, so this.
Maintenance issue?
This, this one, I mean, is truly civil, civil engineering. I'm just getting tight with the setback from the stream to the setback of the property line. There's only so much distance between those, those two lines. And as we've gotten into design, like I said before, there's just, there just isn't room to add a two-foot, two-foot landscape strip. You know, we could add wheel stops in the parking spaces so the car doesn't overhang the sidewalk if safety is concerned. But that landscape strip usually, you know, gets beat up pretty good, you know, people walk across it. But we just don't have the space to add that in. That's the, that's the one reduction across the property.
Are these six-foot sidewalks?
They're six-foot.
Six-foot sidewalks. All right, council, questions?
My, thank you again, you know, for looking into everything. My only concern about removing this strip is that the strollers would be right next to the vehicle, correct?
It'll be, it would be back of curb and then sidewalk, so you wouldn't have that two-foot strip between the back of curb and the sidewalk.
So you'll step off the curb straight into a parking lot?
Correct.
I don't even think we have that here. Do we have that anywhere here? The sidewalk in front has, does it have a buffer?
Yes, we have a grass buffer, but often times you see in apartment complexes, as it stated, it'll be heavily traffic, so it ends up being more mud than grass. For people back up to it to be eaten from the vehicle, just feeling grass.
But our overlay says two feet. Council, any other questions on this one? The next one gets a little worse.
Okay.
Next. Letter E, council to discuss variance application number twenty-five V A R zero zero four submitted by Max Kufton for properties, request, I'm sorry, for properties located at two six two and two nine four South Main Street, Main Street. Parcels number zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two, zero six zero three two A, B zero zero two Z, and zero six zero three two A, B zero zero six, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six, within the MX district and the G Gateway South District. The properties consist of twenty-nine point one four plus or minus acres. The request seeks relief from landscape requirements.
Good evening again, and I apologize. The pinch point was for this particular request under twenty-five V A R zero zero four and not twenty-five V A R zero zero three. So this particular request has the same history as twenty-five V A R zero zero one. This final variance request seeks relief from the non-residential landscape buffer standards in the overlay, which require a six-foot wide planning area around a perimeter of each structure. The applicant is requesting relief into the target areas of the development while maintaining full compliance throughout the remainder of the development. That will recommend approval of this request with permission.
So the pinch point, council, is in that, those little red swiggly squares? Yeah, and that was the one that I was like, okay, that's good. Any questions on that? So just in these areas, he'll ask for a reduction, so it'd be like a little pushback, whereas everywhere else on the property, from the building to the sidewalk is six feet. But in those little areas, and we'll make sure that's just those areas, there's going to be a smaller setback or no setback, I think a reduction. A reduction to five, five feet, five inches, it looked like, and?
Uh, so the pinch point is five and a half feet instead of six feet, so I think we're asking to take it down to two.
Yeah, just like on those two corner areas. Council, any other questions for Mr. Craven in regards to the overall project? Yes?
Mayor, just a, just a little more clarity on the, on item E, the request seeking relief from landscape requirements. Is that, we've seen the pinch points we were talking about with the sidewalks. Now, the landscaping that you're talking about, where was it? And what, what is your proposal? What change? Just, just real quick.
So, yeah, for these two pinch points.
Here's my apartment building.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
The requirement is you should have six feet of landscape off the edge of the building. And at the corner of the building, the sidewalk cuts into that six feet, so it won't be six feet off that corner. It'll be three feet off that corner of landscape.
But just, just on those, just on those two corners.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Craven.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Miller?
I was just wondering, when you all come back, if there's any way that you can be creative with the space that you all have left? You said it's easy to do things on the ground than rooftop and things like that, but if we're taking away outdoor spaces for over half of the residents, if we could put something creative, I don't know, fire pits, more lounging spaces for them to sit outside secluded areas with nice shrubberies and things, I don't know, but if we can have more spaces for them to go outside.
And we do have another many that neglected to mention is we do have an outdoor patio space off the, off the side of the building. As far as like an outdoor gathering area. But we can go back and definitely take a look at some stuff and see if we can.
Because how many people does the patio space hold?
Is it six by six?
No, it's larger than that. It's a.
I said twenty by forty, one or fifteen tables, and actually on that exhibit, Casey's showing what we propose enlarging closed basement area. We'll see it in the area center.
Yeah, we have enlarged the playground here in the center. That's the playground area, and we've enlarged that whole space, so that becomes an outdoor playground, just play area in general for the, for the kids.
But you did say you're gonna go look and, we can put some more balconies. You all just don't want to do all balconies.
Correct.
And so, and if we reduce, trying to think of anything else, if we reduce to two feet, then you'll have six feet of sidewalk and six feet of green except for the pinch areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Your friend back there.
Sorry, I left, Casey. A little hard work. As we go back and redesign some of the stuff, I have a question about the balconies. So in your exhibit, you'll see the front of the building is highlighted, so we can doubt this without the, which you need to get balconies, which we don't. As we try to add the balconies, what would you suggest that we do, if we just stop it at one facade or add it to the cores only? I just want to make sure our architect will give a way for us to introduce balconies and not have them sporadically.
Yeah, I think, I think we discussed this when we had the meeting, I'm not sure who I was meeting with, but that if you were to look at one elevation, in that one elevation, every one didn't have a balcony. And so it'd be like, it'd be like balconies here, and then you have your decorative things and balconies there. So like, in one side of a building, don't y'all remember talking about this? And then y'all come back with everything, you know, so I think that is an option to consider. I'm not an architect, I'm a professor B one, but I think I've seen that on some of the properties, that if you look at an elevation, y'all understand what I'm saying? Some of the part, going straight down will have balconies, but then maybe the next set one. I think Herf side is a great example of this. On that same elevation, not every apartment has one.
You'd rather see them spread throughout versus like just this?
Yeah, I think it looks really bad when you look at one huge building and no balconies.
Okay, all right.
From what I've seen. What do y'all think? Because you're talking about like these huge pieces of property with nothing, yeah. And I want to go back and look at Herf side. I'm almost positive on each elevation of Herf side, there are some that have balconies and some that don't.
Okay, all right.
But one thing you got us agreeing, so that's, good job.
We what?
You got the council agreeing, so that's a good job. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you all. All right, next on the.
Letter F, council to discuss variance application number twenty-five V A R zero zero five submitted by Antonio Lamar for property located at nine five two Dixie Drive. Parcels number one three two zero nine A, A zero zero six, and one three two zero nine A. And one three two zero nine A, A zero zero seven. Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero two three six, within the mixed-use district. The properties consist of zero point nine one plus or minus acres. The request seeks relief from minimum lot area.
Good evening, the volume, um, twenty-five V A R dash zero zero five, twenty-five V A R dash zero zero eight. Are all related to conditional use permit previously granted, cause 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 of the leave. Classified under N A I P S eight one three one for churches, other places of worship and religious organizations. The subject property located within the mixed-use zone district consists of approximately zero point nine one plus or minus acres. The site was originally developed in the C C C A and is part of an existing strip commercial center. On June ninth, twenty twenty-five, the applicant was granted a conditional use permit. Twenty-five dash C U D dash zero zero three, a self-help facility that will host Bible study sessions, self-help meetings, and workshops. That conditional use was approved with eight conditions, all of which the site currently satisfied. The remaining four conditions, however, cannot be met unless all conditional needs are granted. As such, the conditional use permit was approved with the understanding that applicant will pursue these balances to bring the project to full compliance.
Before we move forward, Mr. Craven, do you all want to be excused?
All for variance requests. I'm sorry?
Now, is that telling Mr. Craven they can be, um, excused, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All for, all for variance requests, um, from the applicant, therefore, providing the previously approved conditional use and full compliance. However, that has permitted that these requests do not meet the necessary findings for approval as outlined in the law order. And therefore, that recommends denial of the variance request. Um, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel?
Mayor from May.
Yes, Councilmember Lester.
On, I thought we had had a moratorium on, can you hear me? Okay, uh, I thought we had had a moratorium on storefront churches, um, that they were supposed to be freestanding.
Um, I wasn't that divine more for you on, in the record, as far as that.
Okay, I thought we had, I did just, it might have been a while back. I had also noticed over there on that side thing, where I thought we had discussed this thing before. Um, that there's something about a motorcycle club going in?
Um, so I need to see the zoning verification request, um, and based on their description, they were classified as a civic organization, but based on what they're proposing, they still need a conditional use that hasn't been submitted to that review yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, approach him.
Is, is there anyone here that's representing?
Yes.
I would, I would love to hear that.
You just want us, just want us to speak to it, or you have questions, or do you?
Uh, yes, if you'll just speak to us about, about what your, your activities are there and, and the space that you require and-
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna get some help from the pastor, but this is very helpful because I'm a little bit confused too, I'm just recently engaged. My name is Hakeem Hilliard with Schillvis Grubman Law Firm, I did study this and look at the variance requests that were, that were filed recently with recor- with respect to this request. My understanding is back in June of this year, you all approved a conditional use permit. And you resolved the use issue because you authorized them to use the property as they're proposing right now. Which is for a, uh, churches, other places of, of, of worship, uh, self-help, Bible study, uh, and workshops. That's how they describe themselves, and this council approved that use back in June. Uh, I, I, I heard, uh, staff say that they were approved based on conditions. And I, you know, in the spirit of full disclosure, the only thing I have is the decision letter. Uh, but the letter doesn't speak to any conditions of zoning that were attached to that conditional use when it was approved. Usually it's attached to be attached to the legislation, I haven't seen the minutes, maybe it's there, it just didn't make it on the letter. But there are no conditions as I reviewed, until I saw the staff recommendation today that it came out. Uh, the other thing is, we did file a variance application as directed. And, and, and I go back, the, this decision letter said, you're approved, go apply for a business license. Didn't say about meeting any other conditions, that's what this letter says.
Can I see that one, please, I, I thought it was in our packet.
I'm sorry?
Can I just look at that for a second, I thought it was in our packet, I'll get it right back.
Okay, okay. Uh, and so, I mean, we want to get it right, I'm not making an argument, again, so I'm just trying to understand the facts here. So the decision letter says, you're approved for the use, no conditions, the way I read it as a land use attorney. Uh, and that all you have to do is go apply for a business license. Uh, subsequent to them getting this letter, they were advised that no, you have to apply for variances because eight of the, four of the eight criteria for this use per- conditional use permit have not been satisfied. Uh, then you have to apply for a variance, so then we submitted in a variance application, and you know the variance criteria require you first to establish that there's something unique about the size, the shape, it's five feet a lot, that demonstrates a hardship, and it would not be injurious to the general welfare. We did that analysis in our application, but in looking at the staff recommendations for each of these four variances, and they're all identical. Uh, the, the response is, you should deny this because it doesn't meet the standard. Well, that's not, uh, that's not the variance, that's not a review of the variance criteria, we know we don't meet the standard, that's why we're asking for variances. And we're saying that it's justified based on the arguments that we're gonna make. Uh, but, so there's a little bit of a conflict. Whether, what, what was approved initially, in fact, was, was it approved without conditions? Uh, and then we don't need variances? Uh, or is there something in the minutes that's not in the decision letter? Uh, then let's say that there is something in the minutes that's not in the decision letter, if we're applying for variances, we, we believe that the staff is required to review this against the criteria for variances that are in the code and on the application material. Uh, you might still come back to the same place, but I think, I think that's what he's looking for, uh, the review. Uh, because there's been a lot of confusion, which is why I got involved, and I couldn't understand what he was telling me, but once we got through it, we, we're just trying to figure out where we are, so. Is there anything I missed?
Okay, so, I think, can I, can I clarify something first? I think the confusion, and counsel, I don't know if you remember, that originally it was not presented to us as a church, do y'all recall that? Is that how it, this started? And it was just a Bible study, workshop, self-help, and then at some point, it was presented as a church, which then changes the implication. Like, cause I think we even asked, do you meet on Sundays, do you meet regularly? Because we do have very specific N A I C I S requirements for a church as far as freestanding. So I, I would have to go back and listen to the minutes to be accurate, but I think it was, and I think it might have been you, Mayor, approaching me asking if it was a church, uh-huh.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I, I believe that was, that was one thing that was brought up, was, was this a community group or was it a church? And there was also parking issues.
Correct.
So I did see in the packet where you've resolved those issues. Um, or you have permission, you have a letter of permission from Crane's Hardware to use their, their parking area?
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we have arguments to respond to all the criteria that we're being told we don't satisfy, we just haven't seen the staff's analysis of that issue.
I know there were conditions, Mayor, I do recall that.
So, are you all applying, I haven't seen the original application, are you all, are you all applying as a church?
No, I, I think the confusion there, and you correct me if I'm wrong about that, the, the NAC code associated with the use of Bible, what he's described in his application, the original application, was that he was going to be a, bu- do Bible study, self-help meetings, and workshops. And I think that's probably what you heard when he presented it originally. But there is not a NAC code that just applies to that, churches and places of worship are associated with that, and I think that's why it got tied to it.
Do you meet on Sundays?
No.
Okay, so what days do you meet again?
Um, Tues- Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, and so, um-
Is Saturday like a service? I mean, you, you, yeah, you can talk like a-
Um, so-
Trying to refresh my memory.
So originally, I spoke with Ms. Akuta. And when she sat down and we began to talk, it was because we presented as the church of Zion. So, just the, like, the name alone came with all these variances. And so, um, we talked through different, the, the situation. And I thought that the variances and the conditional use permit were, were running, uh, concurrent with each other. And thus, when we had the conditional use meeting, uh, we thought that we had met all the requirements. And I think I asked counsel at that time, was there anything else additional that we needed to do? And it was something related to if we're gonna do some major construction or something like that. So upon leaving, upon leaving there, we got no follow-up from Ms. Akuta, I guess she left Jonesboro or whatever the case may be.
No, she's right here.
No, no, I'm sorry, not, not, not-
Ms. Cameron?
Ms. Cameron.
Ms. Cameron, Ms. Cameron, Ms. Cameron, Ms. Cameron. So, Ms. Cameron, Ms. Cameron, we got no information from her. And thus, when, you know, we proceeded to do more, you know, we've exhausted our funds, just even, just even being here. And so, you know, when we were told, hey, you guys cannot proceed forward for variances, you know, we were very frustrated because we didn't know anything about variances, you know, what are you talking about, we had already, you know, went through with the whole process. And so, um, when I saw the same conditions, this was the information that I went over with Ms., um-
Cameron.
Ms. Cameron. And, um, uh, I guess the conversation kind of went like this. Um, if we were to change our name to the Journey of Life. And she said, well, if you were to do that, and then, you know, you're hav- you're still having Bible studies just any other. He said, you don't need to do that, you need to just, whatever you all, you all, you all are, apply for with the name. But what I understand now, just the name alone comes with those variances.
What does your business license say?
Um-
He don't have a bill-
I don't have a business license.
Does he have to have one? So when you, when you-
Part of that problem came in when he was requested to bring in the documentation for his nonprofit organization. Could not provide that, that's why I kicked back to these variance requirements. Because he couldn't provide the documentation needed to obtain a business license for said business.
Uh, it was, uh, requiring, uh, nonprofit exist status. And so thus, we were, um, requesting additional paperwork, but the paperwork wasn't coming fast enough. So we, uh, we needed to put a, a sum of the inner, the, the end of the year to get, and I didn't know that at the time.
Are you a non-prof?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Do we have a non-prof status?
It doesn't appear on, on that, so that paperwork, that paperwork is-
Cause there, you know, there's a, there's a-
Yes.
Place that we go to check that has, not placed.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
So we, I spoke with Ms. Pat, and, and from that conversation, I was obtaining that information, and that information is, is in transit, instant transit.
In transit, as in you're applying for it?
No, um, they're supposed to send us a letter out this month, so that we can give that. But for what I, for what I understood, uh, we need to show what would be revenue at the end of the year, um, to get business license. And I didn't know, I didn't know if, you know, that, um, to put a sum there. So after speaking with Ms. Marie, um, we were able to pay all fees to get the business license.
So do we have a business license now?
Well, we, well, we paid for the business license, but we can't officially get them-
And the business license will be up under non-prof? No?
No, no.
It'll be up under church?
Will be, be up under the church as a, um, business.
Well, we can't issue it until it's, it's approved to be there.
Yes.
He hasn't finished the process of the approval to be there, based on his there.
Right, all the paperwork is done, all the fees are paid.
I know, but regardless of this, I'm trying to figure out what you all are. Are you a church?
Yes, yes, yes.
You are a church?
We are a church, but we are using this location for, um, as we said, like Bible study, self-help meetings.
And you have church somewhere else?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Y'all kind of understand?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so your church, you have another location for your church, is that correct? So this is like a satellite Bible study?
Yes, yes.
Not having full-blown church?
It's still church.
So, okay, I'm getting a better picture, but under that, if you have, uh, if you, if this is a satellite of that, your church should have a five oh one C three status, that you're underneath, correct, or are you completely separate entity?
Yes, we are five oh eight, um, um, one C three.
Five oh one C three, mm-hmm.
No, five oh eight.
Five oh eight?
Five oh eight.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Can I ask Ms. Akuta?
So?
For, for the purpose of this variance, do we have, you, you look at variances, uh, what, I apologize. You look at, like, with the NAC code, based on what the business is, am I correct?
Correct, based on the description that the applicant provides, the applicant has looked at the, the NAC code and classified it, um, the use.
And you're looking at it as a church?
Well, that's how it was originally evaluated, probably off the, um, previously directed conditional use.
Okay, so I think that clarifies, so your original conventional use was based on a church. So is it that we need to go change what it is, like what else would it be, a community center or something? Other than that, we have to treat it as a church, and as a church as such, we do have conditions as far as freestanding, not having liquor, you know, all of that stuff. So I think the, the question is, the original application presented as a church.
Right, and I, and, and for what I understood, just the name alone.
Well, no, you said you're a church.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, so it's a church.
Right.
But they didn't, you all didn't call it a church in the decision letter.
Yeah, Mayor.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, that we might have to go back and figure out what's going on, but I think it came in initially as a church. And it provided some explanation, now I think we're back in agreement that it's a church.
Mayor.
And the reason why I say that, it's like, we have other churches here that have several buildings.
Right.
Only one building is used quote unquote for church, but the other buildings are used for subsequent ministries, such as this, but it's still considered a church.
Right.
Do y'all, do y'all understand that, like, yeah?
No, I think, and that was just what I was leading to, it, I think when we discussed it the last time, it kind of reminded me of a Fig Tree Cafe situation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to where, yeah, it may be separate from the church, but it does still have Bible studies and still do different things of that nature. And that's what this, that's what this reminded me of.
I look at it a little bit different, cause Fig Tree was a business. I look at it more like the satellite locations, for example, The Rock, or the Vietnamese church that's right here on the corner. So I think that's probably a better analogy than the Fig, cause the Fig is serving as a, as a revenue generating business.
Yes, they did have the revenue generator, but they also had those same components in there as well, like the Bible studies, and just the different things. So that's what, that's what I'm just saying, that's what it reminded me of.
But I think the sole purpose of the Fig was business, like, I can go to Nuvo and have Bible study, and I don't have to come before y'all, I just use it as Bible study or arts collection.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but I think the, the thing here is the usage, and your usage is activities that would be considered church? No, I'm asking.
No, we do, no, we're, we're trying to, um, do things for the community, I mean, it's just not specifically.
So, uh, I'm not even sure if a hearing next week is valid, Ms. Akuta, do you want to take some time, I don't think we want to table this, are you operating in it now?
Well, no, we, no, no, we're not operating, um.
Okay, I don't know how to clean this, um, Ms. Akuta, can you work with them this week and, 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 and let's see what? I want to keep the hearing on, cause I don't want you to have to go back through the posting and all of that, so we can stay on the hearing, but I think there's some work that we can do to, to, to get to something that we all feel comfortable with, that you can present next week.
I think if this place is found, we'll be a little bit of zoning verification later, um, they could submit that it could be something to begin to look at, reclassify, um, that would be a starting point.
Okay, and we'll still keep the hearing, if we need to strike it, we will. Are y'all okay with that?
We'll do whatever you say.
We, we want you in the community, we just got to make sure you, you hear place correctly, and I think.
And I just want to say to, um, to all of the council members, um, this area that we chose, you know, sometimes the area to choose you, and it's very, it's been a, uh, experience for us all. Uh, that area, um, I don't think the landlord is forthcoming with uses and, and things of that nature. And we're just asking the, um, the council to, um, just consider, we, we are trying. We're trying to just to go the right way and do the right thing, we're not trying to duck and dodge anything, you know? And so we're just looking for support, uh, considering this situation, because, uh, we are, you know, we're small, and we have exhausted funds just to, just to appear before you, so be humbly, you know, ask that you, uh, approve these.
When you're not in there on the days that you said you have Bible studies and self-help, the building is just closed?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would want to add one thing, I, I do think that there is an opportunity for you to split up the uses here.
Yes.
So, if he can describe a use that's not a place of worship, which is usually defined as a place that has regular church services.
Correct.
And if it's not that, if it's these other issues, and you all condition it on what he says he's going to do, and it's not that, there is an opportunity for that use to be permitted that way.
Correct, and that's why I was saying next week, this week, we can work through that.
Okay.
Um, and, and get to a point that can be presented to us that we feel comfortable with, I mean, I can't speak for the council, but I think, I think it's just the idea of the usage that you're operating up under.
And so I would need to follow up with you.
Ms. Akuta, she's in a conference, but she'll, she'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Thank you again for your patience.
I have a question too.
Yes.
And would any of your uses be anything else other than Bible study, self-help meetings, and workshops?
Just regular office though, like regular office time.
That's it, we're not trying to, we understand that, um, it's not a place for a hundred cars, you know, or, you know, overflow, as you guys have said, um, we not the motorcycle gang, just put it that way. So when we have been up there, we have been nonexistent, um, um, up there, as far as being, you know- So when we have been up there, we have been nonexistent, um, up there as far as being, you know, causing a scene or anything like that. But, um, you know, we just want to adhere to, as, as you said, what is, what the codes are.
Okay, and then Marie, Ms. Murdington will work with you as far as making sure that once we get this, then you do have to have a license.
Yes, ma'am.
So we don't have a problem again. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think so, I think, yeah.
Same conversations.
Pretty much. Yeah, thank you, so we appreciate that.
Thanks very much.
Um, if you don't mind, we're gonna, um, I'm not going to tell you what we, we don't have to go through FGH and I. We can pick up on J.
Letter J. Council to consider approval of a renewal agreement for the annual IT services between Net Planner System, Inc. and the City of Jonesboro, Georgia in the amount of seven thousand and thirty-nine dollars and four cents.
Counsel, this is, um, what we have every year. I think that's just a slight price increase. Um, I'm looking, um, so this can roll over to the consent agenda. It's the same things that we had last year.
Item K.
No, I'm sorry, can this go to the consent agenda?
Can't, I just have one question, is Mr. Tran here?
No, he's not here tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that he was...
Well, he provided it, so...
He did provide it?
Yeah, he, yeah, he just gave it to us. All right, can it go to the consent agenda? Cause it auto-renews on October thirty-first. Yes. Just like slightly, like three percent or something like that.
But not, we didn't add anything?
No, we didn't add any services. And you know, and he still, it used to be like eleven or twelve thousand dollars, but he still, the bulk of what they were doing, he still manages as part of their contract. With no objection, we'll move that to the consent agenda. Thank you so much, counsel.
Okay, item K. Council to consider approval of the twenty-twenty-six renewal application between Scopes Landscape and the City of Jonesboro, Georgia for landscape maintenance service, services at Jonesboro City Center and Lee Street Park in the amount of forty-eight thousand.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Um, before you is a renewal agreement for Scopes to continue maintaining the Jonesboro City Center and Lee Street Park in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars, which, um, is four thousand dollars a month.
Is that the same as this past year?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there was no changes.
Counsel, I would ask that we consider approval, um, in the budget that we proposed for this, um, in light of having, how many positions we had cut in your department?
I think it's four.
In light of the three to four positions cut in Public Works, it's just no way that we'll be able to maintain this particular property. Well, it would require a lot of overtime.
Well, currently it's, uh, seven employees in Public Works, that's excluding myself. Um, three of those employees run sanitation three days a week. Um, so any given time, there are four employees maintaining the entire city. Out of those four, you have to also consider vacation time and sick time. Uh, for example, last week, there were actually only two employees maintaining the city last week Friday, including myself.
Counsel, any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm trying to recall, um, this, this group Scopes, have they did our service for a whole year now?
Uh, coming up on the year. I think it started in January of this year.
Okay, I, wasn't it not in January, we did them on an interim basis? We actually did not enter a contract.
Yeah, we're not in a contract, I don't think.
We were, we were using them on an as-needed basis.
Uh, currently right now, I think it went into a month-to-month, but we didn't sign the actual contract itself.
That's, that, that's what I was thinking. So is there an actual contract that you want us to consider? And is this something we should put out a RFP on since it is a contract that would be...
Well, it can be considered as a professional service if you all want to. Did we, did this go out for RFP prior before Scopes? I think we did.
I drafted one and it was given to our previous city manager and I already think it's about it.
I believe we've seen, I'm sorry, mayor, I believe we've seen several contracts. Um, last time, I, I, I think that would be appropriate for us to do a RFP to be sure that this is where we still want to live.
Okay, so we'll do a RFP. And I think you, if you can send that to, um, Ms. Bentley?
Yes, ma'am.
To get out and we'll, we'll put a closure date of November fifteenth, or second week of November to close out the RFP. That'll give us a chance to review so we can get it into the budget. Have you been satisfied with their services?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Uh, one of the things to consider when we, um, do use a landscape company, um, the big difference between Public Works doing it is, um, for example, Scapes, if they're here for eight hours, it's eight hours uninterrupted versus the Public Works, we have to stop, respond to a tree falling, stop, uh, maintain something, something else somewhere else. So it's not a straightforward eight hours dedicated to maintaining landscape.
And they also do our, do they do our, what do you call it, weed control?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Also pruning, uh, leaf removal as well.
All right, thank you so much. So we will, this will not move to next week's agenda. We will, do we need a motion for a RFP? Or can it just be a RFP? Attorney Dryer, do we need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, are y'all okay with those conditions on the, um, till November second? We already have one, we should be to get it out. Maria, you'll work with, um, Marcus to get it on the, do you, are you, who's in charge, who's in charge of posting the RFPs? Okay, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
Letter L. Counsel to consider approval and adoption of the model finding resolution and the model adoption resolutions regarding local amendment to plumbing code for water efficiency.
Good evening again, Mayor and counsel. The Metro Water District was created by the Georgia Legislature in two thousand and one to preserve and protect water resources in fifteen county metropolitan Atlanta areas. The district requires water-efficient plumbing fixtures, equipment, and irrigation components, which are one of many key conservation strategies in the Water Resource Management Plan. This is to help protect the region's limited water supplies. The water efficiency code requirements will help save water by ensuring that new homes, apartments, existing homes, and building renovations will install water-efficient fixtures and components. These changes will utilize less water and sustain the supply that we have available for our growing region. Local governments are responsible for adopting and implementing the Water Resource Management Plan, including the Water Efficiency Code requirements. Effective January first of two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty-four, I'm sorry, local officials will maintain the water, the Metro Water District Water Efficiency Code requirements as a local amendment to the Georgia State Minimum Standard Plumbing Code. Right now, staff is recommending that Mayor and counsel approve the model finding resolution, adopt the local amendment to the plumbing code incorporating the Metro Water District Water Efficiency Code requirements, and authorize staff to submit the amendment to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for review and record.
Counsel, any questions? Yes, Mayor, please.
I have several, because I was reading through this. So that's a lot of verbiage. And, and what I want to know is, is this something that is going to apply to new builds within the city? Are we going to require all of our residents to change out their faucets, their sprinkler systems? Things of that nature to the more efficient?
No, it's just, um, moving forward. Say if you went to, if your faucet broke and you went to buy a new one, it has to be a water-efficient faucet that you're replacing it with.
So it would be, so how are we going to regulate that? So if, if my kitchen sink breaks and I want to go get a new faucet and I like the one I had, I want, I, you know, I've had it twenty-five years on a place with the same thing I had. How is that going to be regulated?
Well, most of the, um, like if you go to the big box stores like Home Depots, most of them are water-efficient.
Yes.
Um, I think what this is kind of more geared towards is, um, if you're building a new home and a building inspector comes and he inspects the plumbing codes and all that and makes sure that they're putting in water-efficient fixtures.
But it's, you, you say it's geared toward, but it's not exclusive for new builds. It, it also falls under...
Yes, if you're replacing, replacing a broken fixture as well.
Replacement as well. Like, for instance, our sprinkler system here at the city center, is it efficient? Is it?
Well, I don't know, it don't work half-time.
I mean, is it?
Yeah, yeah, it, um, under, under this, um, anything, I know, so this came forth before the Clayton County Water Authority and Jacobs Engineering, um...
Why y'all laughing? So I think this is a standard practice when somebody comes to get, pull a plumbing permit. So like if you switch something in your house, we won't know. But this is a standard when somebody does come and do a plumbing permit, that this is the standard that they would have to adhere to for that said plumbing permit. You don't get a plumbing permit when you change your showerhead. Um, I was actually at, um, ARC, our leadership, our Regional Leadership Institute, and ironically, the two people that spoke today was from the Water Department and the Conservation. And this is exactly what they talked about, local amendments to the plumbing code that support, um, water efficiency. So I mean, it's, it's kind of common practice. It doesn't leave anybody at a disadvantage. There is no code citation based on this. It's just that if a plumbing license comes in, this is the standard that we would, we would have moving forward. Think it's a great idea. And this verbiage came in, because is this the verbiage that's with GMA or with the, um, not GMA, the...
It's with the Metro Water District.
That all fifteen of there. Twelve of us are in the watershed, fifteen of us in the, we just went over this today. Counsel, can this go to the, um... Yes, ma'am.
I've just got a couple more questions. So is this something the water, this isn't something the Water Authority or the county would be involved in? Each municipality is doing their own resolution?
Correct, and I'm almost positive the county has already approved theirs.
I'm sorry, mayor.
I think the county has already approved theirs.
Okay.
Counsel, there's no objection, we can move to the, um, consent agenda? All right, thank you, Mr. Herr, I appreciate that.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, counsel.
Item M was gone. Ms. Kennedy, I think you're next, Madam Clerk.
Okay, um, the next item is letter M. Um, counsel to discuss an ordinance regarding a budget transfer of forty thousand dollars from other professional services line item to the software support line item within the police department.
Yes, so the, the software line had gotten into a negative position and that's why we wanted to do this, uh, transfer. I think that one of the things that, um, really, uh, put this line item over this year was an invoice that came in from Prologistic IST, ITS. And it was for like nineteen thousand dollars and it was for, um, monthly cloud service and a four-month unlimited plan on that service. So I think that's where we got into the overage on this particular account this year.
Counsel, any questions in regards to the budget amendment?
Mayor.
Yes.
So is this just maybe within the same department?
Same department.
Just reallocating money to a different line item?
Yep.
What?
Well, the account name on the actual transfer amendment says education and training. Also has fifty-three, twelve, thirty-one.
Oh, I don't know, is that correct?
And then it's going to transfer to travel.
Is this the right one?
Is that one you uploaded?
You want to see it?
This doesn't say anything about software.
Oh, this not?
Ms. Kennedy.
I don't remember this one, but I'll get the right one. We'll get the right one for you.
Okay, so this will go to old business next year?
Yeah.
I didn't catch that, I was just looking at the numbers. Thank you, Councilman Dixon.
It might have been your, the sample, it might have been the same or something.
Oh, I might have just uploaded the sample that you gave me instead of the actual ones. I got what you're saying. She's right, she gave me a sample and so I did change both of them and I probably just uploaded the sample for both of them.
And not the same one, okay. Counsel, so we'll just move this to old business next week and have the corrected copies in front of us. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. We'll come back to line A, because I think the other one was A.
Okay, um, old business A, counsel to discuss an ordinance regarding a budget...
Yeah.
The candidate, we, we, um, so now we have a candidate?
Oh, yes, letter, um...
The candidate form, letter N?
Letter N, right here. Counsel to discuss setting a date for a candidate forum regarding the November election.
Yes.
Okay, so we haven't had a forum and we have so many new people running that I think a lot of people are not aware of. We have two councilmen that have decided to, to take a pause and I just think it would behoove us to host a forum. Um, we did them in the past and we had an amazing, um, a good turnout and we had a really good mediator. If, if she is available, I think would be amazing.
Would you like to organize it for us? Would you organize it for us?
It would just be a matter of setting a date and...
No, you got to get like the questions and the contact person and stuff.
I, I really don't have time to organize the forum. I can certainly assist. So I'll be happy to assist if there's, if there's something that we need to do. I believe in the past, we've, we've allowed the mediator to, um, one of the forums we did, uh, mayor, I think from me and you first got elected, uh, residents put in their own questions when they came in the door and then the mediator was allowed to go through those questions and choose the ones that she felt like was most relevant for all people that were running. And it was nice because it was a, it was a full participation forum. There wasn't, and no one handed out a list and said, here, you have to ask this or, you know, it was, it was what residents wanted to hear. So I just think the residents need that opportunity to hear from all the candidates.
Are you opposed to us working with an independent organization to help facilitate this if we host it here?
Um, as long as it doesn't cost a lot of money.
No, 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 I meant like, I mean, I meant like a...
And no, and no, it's got to be nonpartisan.
Mayor, I mean, I, I wouldn't go get a partisan group, like...
So...
Never mind, okay, we will work on that. I'll see if I can find a group, just because I don't want anybody, yeah, so we can get, I mean, there, there are other, there are nonpartisan social groups. We got the Rotary Club, we got the Women of Clayton County that hosted, so there's some other organizations.
Absolutely.
Do, mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to go ahead and set a date for that?
Um, well, let me check on staff availability, since y'all putting this on staff, so give me a chance to meet with staff and we'll come up with some dates and I need to check the calendar, huh? Somebody say hello? Before, before early voting, that's what I'm saying, that's kind of tight, y'all. So that's why I said, let me, let me look at the calendar and see if we can get something on soon as possible, um... Yeah, so we will work on that first thing tomorrow and probably by, is tomorrow Wednesday? By the close of business, tomorrow's Tuesday? Okay, so by the close of business on Wednesday, we should have a, a date and a location.
That would be wonderful. And can we, can we ask city clerk to add that to our agenda next week so we don't forget to set that date?
Correct, that can go over to old business.
Thank you.
Next item is...
DDA presentation, I'm sorry.
Yes, letter O, DDA presentation by the DDA chair.
Hi, everyone. Is this microphone on? How you guys doing? Yes, one for each person. Um, I'm presenting, um, I'm, my name is Santiya Fox. Hi, I'm coming to you on behalf of DDA, um, chair. I am coming to you because in light of, uh, the recent discrepancies, um, that we've had and several special call meetings that we have from DDA, uh, we're in a place where we're moving into a place of resolution. Thank you so much. Um, so some of the board members and I, um, have been talking as to how can we move forward so that what happened to us the last time won't happen again. Um, this is a conflict of interest resolution request, basically requesting for immediate governance, um, restructuring of the DDA. There, um, as I take us a few steps back and assess everything, there is definitely some conflict of interest that is just kind of causing some confusion. And we want to go ahead and, um, stop that so that we can go ahead and move forward.
Excuse me, one second, Ms. Fox. When you say we, did y'all have votes on this or a quorum met and discuss this?
No, what, well, we, several people have emailed me and, and had some concerns.
Okay, so, so it wasn't out of a meeting or anything collectively as a DDA?
No, it was, it was several people from the DDA who emailed me directly. In fact, we had one member who resigned because of how uncomfortable, you know, they were as to how everything unfolded. So I stated that I would just kind of come before you all and speak, um, as the chair because some of them fear retaliation.
Have all of your members seen this already? They, they know what's about to happen, what you're bringing forth to us?
I'm a member, I, I'm a member, I don't think Helen has seen it. And have you seen this, Andrew? And Andrew hasn't seen it and he's the executive director. So that's why I'm saying I'm not sure which ones have seen it.
Okay, okay.
Um, so the executive direct, uh, summary, excuse me, is the Downtown Development Authority faces two critical conflicts of interest disrupting our independence and effectiveness. Um, current governance structure undermines DDA's statutory authority as an independent body. Um, immediate corrective action required to restore accountability and transparency and requesting city council to vote on specific remedial measures outlined below. Um, the current situation that we recently just faced is the example of the, uh, Juneteenth concert planning of the DDA board. We did not vote to partner with the city. Despite this, our executive director committed DDA funds under instructions from the ex-official position bypassing... bypassing the Board's authority entirely. This created unauthorized financial commitments and undermined our governance structure. So, we did not vote as a party. I've asked Andrew several times for the minutes. He cannot provide them because we did not vote as a group to partner up with the DDA. And that is the first real conflict that we've experienced because we did not vote to partner up.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
So, how many events has the DDA partnered with the city of Jonesboro on?
Uh, I'm not sure.
A number of events. And so, of those other events, do you have minutes that show that the DDA voted to partner? Um, so, for example, did the DDA vote to partner with the city for the Kentucky Derby or the St. Patrick's Day?
The main difference is we did not spend money on those events with this particular one.
We did spend money on those events, we did.
Over fifty thousand was spent out of our account.
All amounts don't dictate what we do, I'm just saying. It's just ironic that the Juneteenth is getting this extra level of scrutiny, and we've had other events that we partnered, and you had not had a requirement for it. I just wanted to be consistent. I, I get exactly where you're going.
The amount of money that came out of our account is what's, um, it's causing the alarm. So, if I can finish my.
It's causing you alarm. Andrew can speak to the amount of money that came out. I mean, I just want us to be fair. Like, it's, I feel like Juneteenth is getting huge scrutiny when I think you were actually on the, um, the Kentucky Derby, and money was spent and no money made, and I think it actually, um, the DDA actually lost money on that.
We, with the Kentucky Derby, actually, we secured.
Do you have those financials?
I, uh.
And do you have a vote? Because the city partnered with you on that as well. Do you have a vote when the city partnered with you on that?
So, DDA.
I mean, do you have a vote for that? I'm just, I want to be consistent.
Well, again, we did not vote to partner up with the Juneteenth celebration.
And nor have we voted. I guess what the record I'm trying to say is we have not voted on any other partnership.
This is a clear.
Andrew, I'm sorry, have we voted on any other partnership?
This is a clear example of the conflict that I'm talking about.
No, it's not conflict, it's a, it's a clear example of me wanting you to be consistent with the scrutiny that you're providing to a certain event and not all events. I'm very clear on that.
As a DDA.
So, I'm asking if you want certain things to be addressed to the Juneteenth, then address it to all of them. That's all.
Unfortunately, we're, I'm not able to chair properly because of this particular conflict.
Yeah, no, no, it's not a conflict, it's consistency, it's consistency. You're picking apart the Juneteenth event that was a huge immensely successful, but then won't hold your own events accountable. You were on the Kentucky Derby, we partnered with you all. Where are the minutes that said that the city would partner on that?
There were no contracts written out from the Kentucky Derby with the city of Jonesboro.
It was, it was, but carry on.
DDA Board held accountable for, we were held accountable.
And I really don't feel like, let me just say this, in the name of the DDA, I don't feel like it's fair for you to present something in the name of the DDA, and the DDA has not met collectively to support this. That's only fair, Santia. You said that few people have called you, that you got, but, hold on a second. This is, this is really good. But I also think this should come out. You can't speak on behalf of the DDA if you have not met with the DDA. And now, you can slight me all you want to in this position. Our executive director is here, and he knew nothing about this. This is you trying to be sni and slick, and it's just not right. You could meet together collectively as a DDA and discuss this, and then bring this back. This is your brainchild. Andrew didn't even know about it. Tell us what members is aware of this. Tell us what members, tell us what members.
It's the same thing about the Juneteenth, ma'am. We did not know about a lot of the financial decisions that were being made on our behalf.
Including the blank checks that you signed. Including the blank checks you signed.
I understand. So, DDA, can I finish?
Because it's not fair to present something personally. She should have came and public comment for this. This is Santia. This is not the DDA. The DDA has not met in regard to anything that's on this. So, you cannot present this as the DDA.
I've recently had.
You cannot present this on the DDA. The DDA did not hold the meeting. Andrew, did the DDA hold the meeting in regard to any of these items?
May I speak?
Now, did, did, um, did the DDA hold a meeting in regard to any of these items? Have you seen these items? Okay, so if the DDA has not held a meeting in regard to this meeting, then you shouldn't be allowed to present. That's not, that's not fair to the authority, to people that may not be in alignment to this that are not here.
Counsel, I'd be more than happy to email you these findings.
Please, thank you. All right, next on the agenda? No, no, I'm not going to, I'm not. I'm in control of this meeting, and it's only fair, if you're going to present something on behalf of the DDA, that the DDA is aware of this. Several members of the DDA are not aware of this. Yes. I'm not saying it's not valid.
My question would be, and with the exception of Ms. Helen, I think that the people, how should it be presented? How should a meeting go if the people that you are trying to have a conversation about are referenced here? And so, I guess I take it as if I were still in the classroom, and I have a issue with members in my, on my hallway, or a, an issue with one of my assistant principals, I'm not going to have a meeting with them before I go talk to the higher-up administrator because you are the people that I'm having, these are the people I'm having issue with. So, I don't, if it could have gotten resolved with just us, then we would have done that. And so, because I'm taking it a step further, then yeah, I'm not going to have a meeting with those people included in it before I bring it to the other parties. Am I making sense?
No, it makes sense, but again, this has not been brought to the DDA for even discussion to see that it wouldn't be resolved there. We just had a stream of emails all last week. Nothing, we did.
I tried to talk about it, right?
No, we never, all this came up with a stream of emails all last week that we finally got to the bottom of the financials. So, we were expecting to have another meeting because we need to nominate somebody on the board. We have not. Andrew is right there. Like I said, we have not had the opportunity to meet collectively.
This is a clear example of what I face on the DDA board on a regular basis.
No, honey, no, it's not, no, it's not. Santia, stop being a victim, stop.
So, this is a clear example of what you guys are seeing right now.
You don't know enough to go the right way about it. We have not had a meeting to discuss it. That's all I'm saying, have a DDA meeting. But there are members, and we don't even know what members. It might be more than just Ms. Helen. I know Ms. Helen called and asked.
If she had a DDA meeting without you and Andrew.
She couldn't have one because it has to be, DDA meetings just like this have to be posted.
We just had a, a board member resign.
What they have probably had is a, is a quorum meeting that was not documented. That's probably what has happened, and that's how this came up, which is not lawful.
Would she be able to have one without the two, if, if her issue was the two of you, just that, only because y'all who I believe are named.
The reason why we are coming to you guys because our bylaws instructs that. We are having issues because you guys appoint the ex officio as well as the executive director. According to our bylaws, we have the right to come before council and ask for help because you all appoint the two people that we specifically are having conflict with. That's what our bylaw states.
But we're not, so here, me nor Andrew are aware of any conflict other than the one that we have with Santia, and that's all I'm saying.
I request that I finish my meeting, counsel, please advise.
They, they don't give you permission, I do. Okay, so, move, just so you'll know, the two people that she's referring to him as, Andrew and I, no one else has vocalized, and I've communicated, I think, with two other members just in regard to other things, and so, no one has entertained any other disdain other than Ms. Fox, who currently is running for council, and I think this is somewhat politically motivated, and to prevent anything precipitating, I would just ask that the DDA be allowed to have a meeting, that Andrew be allowed, and I participate as a member that I've always been.
A lot of our members fear retaliation.
What retaliation can I do? May, um, Santia?
Our previous chair, our previous chair resigned because of retaliation.
Ms. Santia, you can have a seat. You can have a seat.
Thank you. I will email this over to you.
Thank you all. All right, next on the.
I'm sorry. You want to hear?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question for Attorney Drier.
Thank you.
What are, what are the appropriate recourses for her to do with the DDA if she's having issues with our mayor and Andrew? What are her recourses? What can she, she tried, she said the bylaws say to come talk to us, but she can't come talk to us if our, you know, our mayor says we can't continue. So, what are her recourses? What, how does that work with the DDA? What can they do?
Yeah, uh, coun, council member, um, I did take a minute to look up the DDA information. And I'm trying to pull up my notes, but the, um, DDA is for the city of Jonesboro is advisory only. It is a, a one-page ordinance to advise mayor and council. Some, a lot of DDAs have like a six-page ordinances, they're individual entities. Our ordinance is advisory for mayor and the council. Any, any wrongdoing would, I mean, there's, there's the ethics rules, there are the district attorney, and there's the state attorney general. Those would be the things that would be recourse.
And also, counsel, just so, everything that she's presented before us, I would not have a problem entertaining it if it was voted on unanimously by the council. So, I mean, by the DDA. So, here, it's asking for a specific remedy, immediate actions needed. All of this is fine if we had a documented DDA meeting where on the back of this it said supported unanimously by the DDA. I'm only one vote, Andrew is only one vote. Then you have something that's before you that says the DDA unanimously, not unanimously, by majority vote, the DDA agrees on the relief that we're asking for here. Otherwise, I have no documentation on who's asking for this relief other than Ms. Fox. So, I was asking that the DDA hold a meeting, and if the DDA in turn respectfully adopts or supports the majority vote of what's in here, then yes, it comes before you. But a person can't, uh, ma'am, now, um, Ms., um, you can take her out, you can take her out. What retaliation can I do, Santia? What can I do, Santia? Y'all give me way more power than what I have. How can I retaliate against a business? I don't write business license, I don't pay rent or anything. So, I'm just curious as to what type of retaliation I can have from a DDA member. Okay, so, that's all I'm saying. If, I feel like this is a personal, very personal agenda toward Andrew particularly, through me, that perhaps will not get supported by the DDA in its entirety. So, all I'm asking is that we hold the DDA meeting, y'all can come like y'all been coming to them, and if the DDA supports this, then we can move forward with whatever the necessary steps are from the council. But you cannot have one person, that's like somebody from a beautification meeting coming up here and saying the beautification meeting feels this. Well, did they sign it? Did they vote on it? You can't do that. Whether I'm right, wrong, indifferent, or whatever, there is procedural process, and that's all that I'm insisting. But a personal attack on me and Andrew without a full DDA meeting and someone coming before asking for remedy, they're, she's asking for remedy, and for us to vote on remedy that is not provided by our entire DDA just isn't right. That's all I'm asking. Let the DDA meet, and if the DDA comes back, but sending this to you all separately, that's not how, that's not how it lawfully works.
Ma'am.
Yes.
Can, can the council receive a copy of the DDA charter in our email this week?
Yeah, yes.
For review?
Correct.
Because I am not familiar with the DDA charter at all.
I have the ordinance, the enabling ordinance.
Okay, is that, is, is that their charter is, is a, is an ordinance?
That's the power they've given. Some, some can adopt internal rules for how they operate. But, but yes, I can, I can send you that.
And copy all of us.
That would be good. And the DDA, they're not, they are a for-profit organization, correct? They are not nonprofit.
They are, they are, they're not created as an independent entity.
Are we nonprofit? No.
The city is nonprofit, but I think DDAs are for-profit.
They are. I think he was trying to apply for it. Um, the other thing I do want to say, because I, I just hate when stuff like this happens because it's just as if I got enough negativity. I have served on the DDA Board since its inception. I am on the, the found, one of the founding members of the DDA. I have served on the DDA for the last two and a half years and have not had any problem. We've worked together great until three weeks ago, all hell broke loose from one individual. But we had not had any problems. You all hadn't even had to come to the meeting, news hadn't come, we've been going along, doing everything fine. Somehow, three months after June nineteenth, June nineteenth is in question. So, I would just ask that we look at all political circumstances around this and just be fair to all that are involved. But I've served with no problem whatsoever. And the person that left, left because the questioning of the finances almost questioned everybody that was on the DDA. All right. Let's move to O Business. Well, A has already been addressed. Are y'all okay?
Oh, yeah.
I think these can go by really quickly, and then we have a recess before. All right, so A, A is going to move over to O Business. Are y'all okay with that? Because that was the part that she needed to correct those forms. B, um, counsel to consider approval and adoption of ordinance of boards. I really feel like maybe we need to table that until you can get that information, um, Mayor Protown. Are you okay with that?
Are we on, are we on B under O Business?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, this one was approved a couple of meetings ago, and we just needed to do an ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Make it official.
Does that need to go to the consent agenda?
Yes, at your pleasure.
For, for the youth council?
Mm-hmm.
Mister, Mister Alfred Dixon, do you have any input on that?
We've already approved it, it just needs to go into an ordinance. And so, if we do anything beyond that, then the approval that we've already given is not valid.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, so nothing's changed. It's just in need of approval.
Yes.
We needed an ordinance based on council's action.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, that can move to consent agenda. Y'all okay with consent agenda?
Can we do a, can we do a ordinance on a consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Since we already had the vote.
Okay.
Um, the second item, I'm going to move them through a little quicker. It's just that we didn't do a resolution for the millage rate that we approved of nine. So, if that could move to the consent agenda, it's just simply agreeing for the resolution for the adoption that's already been approved. D, approval of a nuisance and abatement. I didn't realize that was on there, I want to strike that. Counsel, before you, you all have our two thousand and twenty-six proposed holiday schedule. I don't think it added any additional days. It was a little different. Um, the Fourth of July is on a Saturday, so we're going to observe it on the third. June nineteenth is on a Friday, so we will observe that on that day. I don't think there were any other differences or anything. We'll still get Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and two floating holidays. Are you all okay with that going to the consent agenda?
Holiday schedule?
Mm-hmm. There's no additional, it's the same number of holiday days as last with two floating holidays. That can go to the consent agenda. The next item is our, the next item is our city council meeting schedule. The only change that you would note, if you come all the way down, when we're out Monday for, is that Labor Day? When we're out Monday for Labor Day, rather than combining a work session and a rego session similar to what we are doing this year next week, we'll just roll our work session to that Tuesday, if you all are okay with that.
I know, you say you're going to look into it, so I'm assuming that that's what happened. But just to clarify, you said something last time about not rolling it over to Tuesday because it conflicts with another meeting that residents were trying to go to.
Yeah, that was the, um, county commissioners, but it's only that one time. If we had two or three of them, then it would. And it's not during millage rake season, so.
Okay.
Well, it could be running late, so, but, this is going to be, it's one of those things that. Yes, sir.
So, and, and just kind of recapping some of the discussion that was had before, I know, to your point, Councilwoman Miller, that some of the meetings around the county, like the school board meetings, would be held on a Monday, and we was trying to see if we could, because some parents or some people.
Well, the county, we're always in conflict with the school board. Like, they have a board, I mean, they have a board meeting tonight, so we're always, so we would have to move our council meetings completely off of Mondays or go to second, fourth Mondays or something like that. So, there's always a conflict with the Board of Education.
Is that something that we're considering?
No, I hadn't considered it.
Okay.
So, the only change, are y'all, and I'm sorry, going back to, and then October thirteenth, rather than meeting on the twelfth, which is a holiday, we'll meet on that Tuesday. So, those two Tuesdays, one for a work session and one for that. Counsel, are you all okay with this going to the consent agendas? Okay. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session and take a five-minute recess prior to going into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
I would just like to say the time is seven fifty-nine.
That's right.
Five minutes, that's all out of discussion I have.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to go back into regular session. All in favor? Did you get the second?
Yeah.
Don Dixon made the motion, Billy Powell. All in favor? Any opposition? All right, thank you so very much. We're now in regular session. Counsel, are there any motions in regard to what was discussed at executive session? No motions, okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor?